Good evening, everyone. We are about to start our meeting for this, for the month of December. And I would remind all of those present that this is a council member and mayor's working committee, and we do not solicit interest on the, from the public during these meetings. Anything that has to come up, we'll handle that a little bit later. So, we have three items that we need to cover this afternoon, this evening, and we will proceed with those right now. And just as soon as Mayor, Madam President, if you're ready.
Thank you very much. First on the agenda, Mayor Proton, Mayor and Council, is the introduction of our recently appointed General Manager for the Event Center. And Marcus, Chip, Morrell.
Morrell.
Morrell, who is known by his friends, right?
Right.
As Chip, so I guess we can all call him Chip. But anyhow, he brings to us over 15 years of experience. His most recent duties were Operations Director for the Columbia Metropolitan Convention Center in Columbia, South Carolina, and the James L. Knight Center in Miami, Florida. Chip will be responsible for managing all aspects of the pre-opening and operations of our facility, which of course is scheduled to open Fall 2018. He's a graduate of Winston-Salem State University with a Bachelor's Degree in Sports Management, Management Administration. He's also a graduate of the International Association of Venue Management School, and is currently an active member of the IAVM, the International Association of Venue Management, and the Event Service Professionals Association. He's been awarded Employee of the Year Award back in 2015 with the Midlands Authority for Conventions, Sports, and Tourism. And he started his work with us for latter part of November, November 23rd. So, Chip, would you like to introduce your, the council?
Oh, I'm very excited to be here. I've been here now for two weeks, and it already feels like home. I've been talking about getting to know the community, getting to know the people in the community, so I could be a part of the community. This building is going to be absolutely amazing. We have so many opportunities to do so many different types of events here and help the community, and I just like being a part of it.
Welcome.
All right.
Let me ask you, and that's such all that's sitting there, and I know y'all are already doing some pre-marketing and all that, are we getting any traction?
Yes, we are. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Assessment of Fair Housing, Ms. Nickson.
I do have a question, because I've been asked, and I don't know if any other council members have been asked about those that are seeking employment or interested in being a part, you know, working at the downtown community center. Matter of fact, I had a six minutes of our word to get into somebody so they could know what their process is going to be, that you had tonight. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Also want to just remind everyone, John McDonald, John is Senior Vice President with SFNA. Stand up, yeah. And John is responsible for locating markets and bringing markets to our community. To your question, Ms. Nick, between John and between Marcus, they will be the ones that they need to get to as far as any employment opportunities. Right now, I think easily we say probably only about eight full-time positions that they're trying to fill. General Manager was one of them, a Marketing Director is one of them, and John can tell you more about them, but, but he's the person that they need to be getting in contact with whenever they are advertising those positions.
And we also will be conducting a job fair in March for the greater community as well, and some of those full-time jobs will be included in that job fair.
So, excuse me, so, when told eight positions, eight positions, would it, then job?
About eight full times. Yes, ma'am, and there are a number of part-time jobs as well.
Does that, Luke?
Well, I was asking about my daughter, how construction is looking so, were we looking at a change in construction?
They can't address that. I'll have to.
Oh, you don't address that, maybe we're in another separate meeting?
In a separate meeting, because I'm not, not prepared.
All right, thank you.
The, tonight, what I want to do is just give an update to the council on where the Rocky Mountain Event Center project is. So, just to remind you of the schematics, just to remind you, orient you to the facility. Remember, you've got eight basketball courts that can be structured in different ways. Eight basketball courts can become 16 volleyball courts. You can also take the facility and create an arena on the north end of the floor. If you go down there and look at it now, you can actually see, okay? So, aerial view, drone shot of the actual event center. So, this is, this was taken late November, okay? And if you go down there and look at it now, it doesn't even look like this anymore, okay? Because what you have, you have the roof, this is the fieldhouse, so now you have all this construction here, Family Entertainment Center, then you go down by Gold Leaf Street, and you see steel all the way through, okay? Then on the backside, you have OIC Clinic, you see the locker rooms, and you see storage area, okay? We've even already started bidding for the Family Entertainment Center. Some bids have already been awarded. So, with the, we've had some challenges with the construction of the event center, couple of challenges. We had to undercut the site more than we expected. In fact, we had to remove about 10,000.
cubic feet.
9,000 cubic yards of dirt. It was not suitable. So, that was an expensive proposition, okay? And so then we also found underground storage tanks that we had to remove, okay? But we got good storage tanks, but that's going to come before you. But also just wanted you to visualize, I took this picture from the inside of the event center. So, all this concrete, most of the concrete has been poured, but they're still, they're finishing up the concrete one, okay? And remember, you did re, a reinforced floor of the concrete. Previously, we had planned to only do a four-inch thick floor, we went to a six-inch thick floor. We also went away from having a permanent wood floor and went to a portable floor. What that does is that gives us more flexibility in the building. That means we can do more, more opportunities for the building to be successful. You can do car shows, it can handle it, boat shows, things of that nature inside the event center. Right now, all the steel is outside, okay? If it's not standing up, it's laying in a parking lot somewhere. All the earthwork has been completed, so that problem that I told you about with the undercut, all of that is done. Concrete work is near completion, and about January, they will actually be installing the basketball goals in the fieldhouse. And the building should be closed by late February or early March. You know, get all that steel erected, then we have to pour the concrete, and, and then we start coming down with the sides. You'll start to see the brickwork, the glass and all that will start to fall into place. So, in late February, early March, in the life of a building, there are probably three significant times. One is when you do your groundbreaking. On March 13th, 2017, you had your groundbreaking. So, about the first part of March, you should do what we call a topping out ceremony. And that topping out ceremony will allow us to have people to get in the building, to have some of our funders, because if you remember, when we did the groundbreaking ceremony, we didn't actually have all of our financing in place. And so, it'll be an opportunity for all those funders to be here for that event. So, we'll be getting that organized and sending out save the dates for, for, for that topping out ceremony. So, when I talk to you about the bad field dirt, there's some things that we're going to come to you next month about the reallocation of resources. And WB, what they did is, I knew that you didn't like the word "change order," and so what will happen is, we're going to be bringing you a change order. But what that change order is, is just really a reallocation of resources from the budget that we currently have, okay?
All right, but that makes me ask, what are we having to give up?
You're okay. You're okay. Let me tell you what happens. What will happen is, like the field dirt and the underground storage tank, we have contingencies. The owner, we have a contingency, and I represent the owner, then the contractor has a contingency, and then we have contingency in our FFNE, because we knew something would happen that we would need to, to make some adjustments. So what, Ms. Miller, we're not giving up anything, but what will happen with that reallocation because of that dirt, and fortunately, what we do is, we meet on a monthly basis, and we're having weekly calls. What we say to our contractor is that, God didn't tell us it's going to be this much dirt. So, what ha, what will happen is, we will do a change order, and half of the cost for the dirt will come out of the owner's contingency, the other half will come out of the contractor's contingency, okay? So, we're not giving up anything. But this, but as we've gone along, we've also identified other things that we need in the building. Some of the things that we'll be talking about, like some security items, you have parking lots, and nowadays, when you have these type facilities, you want to make sure that people feel secure. So, we have video cameras, so people, when they park, you may be able to see things, you have video cameras inside the facility. So, all of those things, we will be coming back to you with a change order, but what will happen is, we will take it out of contingency, but we also will do some reallocation from the FFNE side. What will happen is, we've already bid some things in the FFNE, and they came in under budget, okay? So, when we had that, that gives us an opportunity to reallocate those things to the things that we, that we need also.
So, not additional costs?
Well, it is additional costs, but we're, what we're trying to do is not come back and ask for any more money. That's what we're trying to do.
Now, the soil that was moved was not contaminated, right? It was just the quality of the soil.
It's just the qual, the quality. If you remember, we, we took down old houses, old buildings, and the standards for building way back when, it's not, not the same as it is today, so.
In other words, it wouldn't roll out.
Right. It wasn't stable. Talk about the event center. The website went live December 4th, or this, this past month?
This past month.
This past month. So, now people can go to the website and find out about our event center. But as we talk about the event center, we're still talking about things that we need to do to, to make that website, one, friendly, but also making sure that it's more up-to-date as the actual configuration of the building. You just met Marcus, so the General Manager is here, and you asked about events, we are in the process of getting contracts executed for events that will go in the building. For, for the year, and it sounds real strange, because I'm standing in, we're standing in 2017, but for the year 2019, okay? So, we're hoping real soon to, to let you know, and I would just simply say, from the performer that was done by SFNA, they anticipated 18 events in the building for the first year. And I, I think we're going to be on target with that number, okay? Because as the website's going live, as the building becomes more of a reality, people are seeing the building, and they're talking about what it is they can do in the building. John, John has been coming up to meet with people that want to do different things in the building, some folks want to come have their class reunions in the building, and so we're excited about the possibilities that it brings to us. Some of them may be, even be of a national origin. So, the event center will be completed by October 7th, 2018. We actually hope that the event center will be completed before then. What we anticipate is that may be able to make up a little time, because originally, our contract calls, talks about mid-September 2018, and we believe we can, we can make some of that time up. So, again, questions? Is your inside view? See the parking lots already, some of the par, that's the first line on the parking lot. But even if you go down there today, that building is massive. When you go down there and look at it on Gold Leaf Street, it sits up above the street, and you can look outside Rochelle's City Manager's window, and you can see the event center from, from the City Manager's office. So, any questions?
What provisions have been made for water runoff on that, on that site? I mean, I know we don't have tanks, we're trying to do that when we did the playhouse.
Relative to before and after, the impervious area covers roughly, equipped, roughly the same, it's a small increase, but it's under the regulatory limit in terms of percentage of entries when you go back to what you've done. But the parking lots all going in, straight in, there's a culvert, existing culvert in the southeast corner that goes out to the ditch to Parker's Canal. All of that runoff's coming to the air, what's coming off the roof is being piped on the east side of that system, the north side's piped directly into the storm drains in Main Street. So, everything's kind of essentially going straight in.
And those, well, I know you said the impervious area is the same, except I guess for the addition of parking, the parking area, right?
Well, the net, by the time you look at roof areas and driveways and rooftops and every, you've got to remember that when Federal Warehouse was there, where the building was there, that, that entire block was 100% covered before. So, we have a little bit of gain on the parking lot side, there's green space and there's islands and this kind of thing, so the net gain in impervious area is really less than 10%. So.
I don't guess we gave any consideration to putting in those strips of pavement that allow water to soak in?
Forest pavement.
Pardon?
The forest pavement. We, we did not announce a cost consideration, but that would be, if we ended up having to go retrofit something, maybe we'd do that. On the front end, it was cost consideration, unless it was big and our budget wasn't quite big enough.
Thank you.
I mentioned, I mentioned the change order that's going to come to you next month, and because of our finance with new market tax credits, we have a sort of a double process that we have to go through. So, we'll be bringing a change order to you that covers the items, some of the items that I talked about, and then probably in February, we'll be coming back to you for, hopefully, the final change order, which will be more related to some of the work that we're doing related to the clinic. But again, we anticipate that to be a reallocation of resources. We're doing everything we can in working with our contractors to try to keep this thing within the budget that you established for, and every time we talk to the contractors, we say we don't have any more money. This is it. Any other questions? Well, thank you all for allowing me to work with this project. It's a great project, great project.
Nice article in the Triangle Business Review.
About our business?
Yeah.
The la, the, the three things, the last one is the, is the grand opening.
So, may I approach in both, there are members of the council, while Kellyanne is passing out the two documents, what we're talking about next relates to a document that's on council agenda for a public hearing tonight and also for approval by council. This is our draft assessment of fair housing for 2017. This document is required by the city to have completed, and talks about how we will spend our funding allocation that we received from HUD. Usually, we do a plan that's over a five-year period, but we're doing a three-year plan this year, talks about goals, action steps, how we will move projects forward in the city, and how we will use those federal dollars. The assessment of fair housing has a public comment period, and the public comment period closed on the ninth, and we wanted to provide the comments that we have received to date to you, and also give you the opportunity to see the response that staff provided to these public comment periods. The public comments that we received to date, there was a group of comments that was received from the Community Academy. We've received comments in the past from the Community Academy on our citizen participation plan, on the analysis for impediments, which was the language for the former document before it was changed by HUD to the AFH, which is affirmatively furthering fair housing. So, I wanted to provide for you tonight, the first letter that you have is actually the letter from the Steering Committee. It outlines what their concerns were once they had an opportunity to review the AFH. And then the second document that you have is staff's response to those concerns that were in the letter. So, what I wanted to do was be able to just walk through those concerns and then respond to any questions that council may have prior to our, our public hearing. You may hear some of the same concerns expressed by citizens that come tonight, and that is because with the timing of when the public hearing closed versus when we were having our public hearing, we have not had a chance to respond back to say what things we might have changed or what things we would recommend changing in this document prior to council accepting it and approving it for us to submit the final document to HUD. So, the first concern that was expressed by the Community Academy is that the city should adopt policies to mitigate gentrification in year one of the AFH. The AFH includes goals that can be implemented in year one, two, and three, and we did include as part of the goals that the city would have broad policies and look at broad policies to address residential displacement. That is included as a year-one activity, but it's not as explicit, I think, as the Community Academy would like for us to see. So, I think that's a concern that you all would hear coming from the public tonight. The second item that was noted by the group is that there was some concern about whether or not there was enough meaningful citizen participation. And by meaningful citizen participation, there was a lot of concern expressed around the timing of when things needed to happen. For us, we do acknowledge that the timing was tighter than what we would normally have in a process. We still did meet the 30-day public comment period that's required by HUD, but due to the timing of the city receiving our final allocations from HUD this year, our schedule was compressed more so than we would have liked. So, we do recognize that timing was an issue, but we did make that 30-day comment period. And although the timing period was compressed, we did outline how we did try to reach out to the public. We had stakeholder interviews. Those started initially in February. This is when we were operating under the system where we thought we would have to have the analysis of impediments, the AI, done. But once we decided to extend our current plan for a year, that kicked in a new requirement for us to do the AFH, which is what caused the compressed time schedule. The AI, the same language that's in the AI is the same language that is in the AFH, so there were not any significant changes between the two documents. So, we did have stake, stakeholder interviews that occurred in February of 17. We had community participants that did come, about 20 participants participated. We had a meeting that was scheduled with the ESL, English as a Second Language Coordinator at Nash Community College. We also did some additional outreach to the Hispanic and Lato, Latino community, November 8th, at Nash Community Colleges as well, with members of that outreach committee to take information back. We also had public meetings, we had three public meetings, Edgemont County, Nash County, and Rocky Mount. One of our public meetings, we did not hold that meeting at City Hall, we actually went out to the neighborhood, it was held at the Down East Partnership for Children at one evening. We also completed an online survey. This was ran as part of the AI process from February 3rd to March 3rd, it was a 30-day period. We had 11 residents that responded, and six representatives responded that were part of stakeholder groups. Those results are attached in the back of the AFH document that shows the public comment. And then we had a public display period. We had a public display period that was in March, that ran from March to July. We also had another public comment period, public display period, which was the 30 days from November 9th until December 9th. We held, ran public notices that were in the newspaper, they were held in the Rocky Mount Telegram. If you remember, a few minutes ago, we did amend our citizen participation plan, so the next time that we do this, we will advertise in more than just the Rocky Mount Telegram when we have these notices.
Question?
Yes.
Says the city, on the first page, it says, "The city should adopt policies to mitigate the impact of neighborhood gentrification."
Yes.
"In year one."
Yes.
And then, it says, "The city established a broad policy that addresses residential displacement in year one." Was there any specific policy consideration that was enunciated that we were asked to specifically address, or did we just get a general observation to adopt policies that mitigate gentrification?
There's a general observation. Some of them asked us to look at inclusionary zoning practices, some of the policy recommendations for us to look at having a rental register so that we can keep track of rental properties and as they're changing hands in neighborhoods. So, there were, there were a list of policies that they would like to see conceptually, but there is not one particular policy that we have that says, "This is the one that we would like to see in year one." I think there are a number of policies that they would like for us to look at and evaluate, and like for the city to see get in place in some form or another moving forward.
Okay.
And I think that would require some time for us to evaluate which ones we would be able to implement.
Now, specifically, when we had run of our community at the whole, Ms. Perry Cole spoke, and a reference was made to an organization, PolicyLink.
PolicyLink.
PolicyLink.org.
Yes.
I went to the web.
Those results are attached in the back of the AFH document that shows the public comment. And then we had a public display period. We had a public display period that was in March, that ran from March to July, and we also had another public comment period, public display period, which was the 30 days from November 9th until December 9th. We held, ran public notices that were in the newspaper, they were held in the Rocky Mount Telegram. If you remember, a few minutes ago, we did amend our citizen participation plan, so the next time that we do this, we will advertise in more than just the Rocky Mount Telegram when we have these notices.
Question?
Yes.
Says the city, on the first page, it says the city should adopt policies to mitigate the impact of neighborhood gentrification.
Yes.
In year one.
Yes.
And then, it says the city established a broad policy that addresses residential displacement in year one. Was there any specific policy consideration that was enunciated that we were asked to specifically address, or did we just get a general observation to adopt policies that mitigate gentrification?
There's a general observation, some of them asked us to look at inclusionary zoning practices, some of the policy recommendations for us to look at having a rental register so that we can keep track of rental properties and as they're changing hands in neighborhoods. So there were, there were a list of policies that they would like to see conceptually, but there is not one particular policy that we have that says this is the one that we would like to see in year one. I think there are a number of policies that they would like for us to look at and evaluate, and like for the city to see get in place in some form or another moving forward.
Okay.
And I think that would require some time for us to evaluate which ones we would be able to implement.
Now, specifically, when we had run of our community of the whole, Ms. Perry Cole spoke, and a reference was made to an organization, PolicyLink. PolicyLink.org.
Yes.
I went to the website, have we explored any of that? I actually looked at it. It's not as much policy, in my estimation, as it is goals that you would seek to aspire to implement affordable houses, but we have, we looked at that as a means of implementation of policy.
We have had, our community building staff has started looking through that from the results of that last meeting. In terms of having a recommendation of specific policies from that site to implement, we would be prepared to do that right now. I think it requires a little bit more evaluation before we bring a policy, before council to say that we would recommend that we could do that here. And I think also, those policy recommendations would need to be done in conjunction with some of the citizens and at least the Executive Committee of the Community Academy before we would bring something forward recommending it to council. I think they need to be done in partnership with the group as well.
Can I ask a question? So let me probably get back to baseline a little bit. So this word gentrification, what is the definition? What is our definition, what is their definition? Kind of what are we talking? I mean, I think I have a sense of it, but I'm wondering, do we have an understanding of what we're trying to deal with?
In the documents that we've received from the Community Academy, I haven't seen where there's been an explicit definition of gentrification. In the conversations that we've had, it's the broader concern of residents that have been longtime residents in these communities being priced out, no longer being able to afford to live in those communities as new development is coming in. We also have to think about how individuals that may want to age in place as they're becoming older are able to afford taxes that may escalate as new development is coming in, or if they're no longer able to maintain such a large residence, what are some of the policies that might be in place that could help them stay in that home, but also having some ancillary uses associated with that property so that they don't, their only option would be to move to a completely new neighborhood, as we're starting to see new development and redevelopment in these areas and neighborhoods that are adjacent to downtown. But if you were to ask if there, if it has been defined explicitly in what we have so far, we haven't done that.
Should we do that, so that we kind of understand what we're trying to accomplish? Because you were kind of explicit then.
I think it would make sense to do that and to get agreement on what we're talking about, to make sure that we're both on the same page. That would be helpful.
Gentrification, when it is believed to happen, can happen in a neighborhood because of particular projects that are going on. It does not have to be a building, that's improved and therefore people that previously lived there can no longer afford, but you're making improvements in the neighborhood that brings up all the values.
It could.
And if an area has been industrial and you put in housing, and that's believed to be gentrification, and when there were not people really residing there, well, how is that the case?